Ladies and gentlemen, we have seven board members in the room, so we're going to get started since we are already eight minutes behind schedule. And I'm trying to be respectful of everybody's time. So, this evening, we have Ms. Cohen managing this portion of the meeting because the Facilities Planning Advisory Council reports to the full school board, but CPDC is kind of the managing organization for them. So, the rest of the meeting is yours, Ms. Cohen.
All the power, I don't know if I can handle it. All right. Thank you so much for joining us. We really appreciate it and have very much looked forward to your mid-year report. I hope that you all had a wonderful retreat on Saturday and got to tour the amazing West Springfield High School, newly renovated. So, my job is to say that we are grateful to have the Facilities Planning and Advisory Council here. Our chair is Dan Ammanoff, our vice chair is Charlie Hooky, and secretary is Katie Herman. The Facilities Planning Advisory Council reports on its activities to the school board semi-annually. This mid-year report focuses on the activities and progress of FPAC in responding to its annual charge from the school board. With that, I will ask you all to take it away.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Cohen. We appreciate it, members of the school board. I would like to introduce a few other FPAC members that are in the room with us tonight. We have, I think, mostly our new members. We have Troy Thompson from the Lee District. We have Kathy Hozick from Mount Vernon. And we have Angela Smalls, which is one of our new at-large members. So, thank you all for coming tonight. This is our semi-annual report. We'll go to the agenda real quick. We'll keep this brief. We'll just kind of review the annual charge. We'll give you an update on FPAC processes and activities relative to the charge, and then conclude and have plenty of time for you guys to ask questions. As you recall, the school board annual charge for this year is to work with staff and build on FPAC's previous work to develop the long-range vision for FPAC's school facilities to be included in the capital planning process, incorporate major maintenance and asset management requirements into the CIP, incorporate facility safety and security requirements into the capital planning process, advise and assist with the development and implementation of updated boundary policies and processes, and plan for the impact of future boundary changes following construction of a new Western high school. FPAC meetings and processes. Of course, we hold monthly meetings that include discussion with staff. As we have four new members this year, we have kind of brought back some of the directors that we had met with years ago to cover all the bases, so we can get everyone up to speed, which includes, obviously, all the facilities people, but also some construction, maintenance, energy-related folks, food service, and athletics. We have subcommittees that are tackling each aspect of the annual charge. And as you can see, we do research, meet, draft input, and formulate the material that will go into our semi-annual and annual reports. To facilitate the work, we schedule monthly work sessions here at Gatehouse, and each subgroup can use that time as they feel free to, invite guests, have people come. We don't use them every month, but as we need them, we have them available. And then, just this past Saturday, we had our annual retreat over at West Springfield High School. And it's a beautiful new facility. And, you know, Assistant Superintendent Plattenberg actually came out and gave us a tour, because, of course, he is an alumnus of that school. So, we greatly appreciate you coming out and doing that for us. So, let's move on to some of the charge items. The long-range vision for school facilities. You know, there's several issues relative to that, which include changing demographics within Fairfax County. Schools' physical environment and the curriculum should be complementary. Schools are labs of life and should offer the opportunity to examine various aspects of the cycle. And school buildings should be available and provide value to all shareholders. The items on the slides are essentially talking points that we're working with in terms of formulating our report. So, some of these are fleshed out, some of these are just outline ideas, but we'll cover these more deeply in the report itself and then in our annual report. The other charge is to incorporate major maintenance and asset management into the CIP. This has been, you know, an item that's been on for a couple of years. The CIP is primarily focused on accommodating projected enrollments and program requirements. However, upgrading and replacing major maintenance items should be an integral part of the capital investment program. So, while we, you know, certainly need to accommodate the students that will be coming over the next few years and plan for growth, we need to take care of the facilities that we have today and plan accordingly and include the appropriate funding to maintain those Of course, of recent nature is safety and security. You know, the school board has undertaken a couple of studies with regard to where Fairfax County is in that area. And we have met with Tom Vaccarello on a couple of occasions to find out what his needs are and advocate for those in, you know, where we can in the capital planning process. A lot of those projects are probably grant-related type items, but where we can help in the CIP, we certainly want to be sure we acknowledge those items. You know, and then, as you know, boundary policies and processes and future boundary changes with a potential Western high school have been a focus for the board now for about a year and a half. We have had people meet with, I think, all the school board members, and most seem to agree that capacity seems to be the primary benchmark for initiating an adjustment. But beyond that, you know, there's a lot of different things that need to be thought through in terms of, you know, how that process comes about. And, of course, we have the boundary consultant that's doing their work right now. You know, some concerns of ours are the effects of the Silverline Development and the Embark Project, you know, one on the western side of the county and one on the southeastern side of the county, both of which have the potential for significant number of housing units, and, of course, you know, the associated students. And we feel, of course, with any process involving boundaries, community engagement is critical. And I know you had a big discussion about that aspect of it at your regular meeting a couple of weeks ago. Going forward, FPAC will continue to meet monthly. We meet through the end of May, and we will culminate our work. You know, we'll have a draft of our annual report probably sometime in May, and then we'll present that typically in July. So, we've got a lot of work to do. This is just kind of a snapshot of what we've been doing. And if you have had a chance to read the report, we're happy to answer any questions you may have about that. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay. If you would like to be recognized for a question, will you just put your -- we're trying some new processes today, so it's very exciting. If you'd like to be recognized for a question, will you put your placard? And this time, we're going to have Eileen has agreed to monitor our time, which is wonderful. Then I can actually listen to your questions and the wonderful answers. So, just make sure you watch the clock, and we'll also try to give you a heads-up for the last 10 seconds. So, Ms. Tolan, would you go first?
Hi there. Thank you so much for being here. A couple of combination question comments. When I read through the report, it occurred to me that I am serving on the JET, the Joint Environment Task Force, along with Carl. And we have a couple of things that are similar, or similar ideas around kind of using the building as a laboratory for learning. We have an upcoming forum topic around, you know, renewable energy and use of renewable energy in our buildings and using that as a learning tool. And, you know, with a lot of the work that I've done, I can easily envision using that whole building as a learning place. So, just want to throw that out there, that, you know, let's make sure we collaborate, because I think it could be really exciting, you know, to work together on some of those topics. I also thought, you talked a little bit in your report about transportation as well, and we have a transportation group in JET as well. And, you know, we have an energy group, so there's just so much overlap. So, we want to make sure that we collaborate there. What else was I going to say? We have a big list here. One of the questions that I do have is I didn't see any mention of, and I guess maybe you're looking just at the building envelope. I didn't see any mention around sustainable landscaping and, you know, sort of the exterior of the building. So, I don't know if that's something you're looking at at all.
We haven't as of yet. It's certainly something we can incorporate into the whole sustainability piece. We did have an opportunity to go to the Alice Sleet West School in Arlington. We did a field trip over there and took a tour, which is their newest net-zero school in Arlington County. And that was tied in. Yeah, the building envelope, of course, has the net-zero components, but the site that it sits on also had to incorporate some landscaping, which allows for the stormwater management and all the other features on that particular site. And it was neat to see that they were able to get rid of a lot of the impervious surface and create kind of channels and almost like river-like things that are also, that sit on top of the play areas and some other places. So, I think there is definitely a lot on the landscaping side. We haven't, we're looking more inside the building, but we'll certainly look at the whole facility as well.
One other question I had is, one of the budget amendments that I have actually is looking at additional staff in Jessica Gillis's office in looking at, you know, data around capacity numbers. And I noted with your interest in sort of tracking, you know, the Silverline Development and Embark, I'd like to have that conversation kind of with you guys, too, to make sure that that's something that makes sense, and we're doing that in the, you know, kind of collaborative way.
Absolutely. I think, you know, any help Jessica's office can get in terms of headcount would be fantastic. You know, it's amazing the amount of work they can put out with what they have. The, you know, the big issue, and I think you guys touched on this and maybe Superintendent Plattenberg talked about it a little bit, is the disconnect between, you know, the county's planning areas and the schools' planning areas. And we need to get that synced up as quickly as possible, because, you know, they're talking one number, we're talking another number, which is probably more realistic. And we need to be sure that we're all on the same page with that.
I have one more topic. The Trades for Tomorrow program. I didn't necessarily see that in your report, but I know that's something, you know, going on in facilities and perhaps has some potential to help us not only educate our students, but also get us some more, you know, plumbers and electricians and other tradespeople that we need. Are you looking at that at all, or?
We did have a conversation with Justin Moss in connection with that, and the Edison Academy in particular, where there is actually a facilities location on that site. And do you guys remember, are they, do they have students that participate in that, or are they? Yeah. I'm pretty sure they did. So, thank you. So, yes, it is something we're looking at. We highly encourage that. We were talking about it actually in connection with the, back to the transportation thing about the shortage of bus drivers as well. Then we realized that, I guess, it's probably not even possible to get a CDL license until you're maybe 21 anyway. But, you know, but there certainly could be some mechanical aspects of that that could certainly help.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. We have Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thanks just for clarification for the rest of the board. I wanted people to understand that as an advisory committee report, we don't give the FPAC next step. So, please realize that as we have our conversation this evening. I also want to thank you all for your continued support and commitment to our schools, because I know FPAC takes a lot of time. One of the, I have a couple of questions. One is, have you spoken with the consultants that have been hired that are doing the boundary study?
We have not as of yet. We are awaiting, when we last spoke with Jessica in our last meeting, she had not yet met with the consultant to work on the timeline and the scope and the complete things. So, we're hoping that that gets resolved here soon.
Okay. I can give myself a next step.
Okay.
We have met with, we have met with the contractor since that time's an update, and as a part of their data gathering, their artifact finding, and the conversations, FPAC is included in that.
Excellent. Next, I want to make sure all of my fellow board members know about the FATE program, which is the opportunity for our students to actually build, get experience in the trades and build houses. So, that event is coming up, their open house, so I urge you to attend. Last, I want two additional. You talk about the syncing of county's, county planning areas and schools' planning areas, and how would you do that? If I can stop the clock.
Ideally, it would come through some of the joint meetings that the school board and the Board of Supervisors are having together. Perhaps Dr. Brayden and the county executive could work on that as well. It could also be done at the, with the Planning Commission's Schools Committee and the representatives that go to those meetings. I think there's a number of places that that can be advocated for, and I would encourage all of those to be used.
Excellent. Thank you. Additionally, have you ever been asked to look at the ed spec and how that impacts our facilities planning? If I can stop the clock again.
We haven't been asked. It's definitely something that's on our list. I think I referred to it actually on one of the slides. I may not have mentioned it. You know, we're, you know, the ed specs have been something that are kind of a evolving thing. It happened, you know, I think there was a huge revision to the ed specs that happened maybe four or five years ago. And I believe all the new renovations and everything that's been built since then has taken into account the new ed spec. But we, we've not looked at the detail, like line by line, science lab, by, you know, that kind of detail.
Ideally, if you all would, then I would also like to understand the impact on the ed spec on overall space planning and taking, and building on Ms. Tolan's comments also having outdoor classroom space, because some of our land mass for our high schools are so tight that the ability to actually provide that full classroom experience outside gets limited if we don't think about how to address it.
I agree. And I will just say, since we were just at the West Springfield campus, they designed several areas out there that could be used for outdoor collaboration and places where students can meet, which was great to see.
Excellent. And last, I do appreciate your discussion about additional items that need to go into the CIP. I think that's really important, because last week I sat down and reread the full governance manual, and there are sections in the governance manual of additional items that should belong in our CIP that we have not necessarily included, and you've included them here. So, thank you.
I have Ms. Sizemore Heiser next.
First, I just want to echo what Ms. Corbett Sanders said about thanking you guys for the work you do. I know it's a lot on the FPAC, and so I appreciate it. These are just a couple of thoughts that I had in some of my tours of schools and things that I saw as I was reviewing this earlier today. But as you're looking on to give sort of advice and comments to us and through us to hopefully Jessica's and Jeff's office, when we're looking at either ed specs or CIP or future building, there's a couple of pieces. First, how much do you get into conversations about, like, genre design, learning spaces, inclusive spaces, sensory rooms, things that are sort of thought about that help meet the needs of all of our students? I don't know how much those types of things, when I mean by genre design, I was at Lanyard Middle School today, and they are redesigning their library to include more of a café style that you see in the colleges in terms of learning spaces as opposed to traditional tables and things. And she was referring to genre design and some of the design of the library. So, I was just curious, first, you know, genre design, sort of innovation labs, maker spaces, some of this portrait of graduate spaces, including the outdoor classrooms. So, how much of that is, I guess, is part of the conversations?
It's certainly a conversation we've had over the years. It started off with this whole 21st century learning kind of classroom, what is the classroom of the future? We actually looked at a lot of designs for DOD facilities overseas, because they seem to be fairly far along in implementing a lot of these kind of newer concepts. We haven't really, I would say, no, we haven't explored specifically the ones you mentioned, although we do constantly look at using the space more efficiently and how, you know, we can allow for all the needs that a school may have.
Thank you. I bring this up because in some of my school tours, I've been seeing some of our schools use funds in different ways to create these spaces, you know, sensory rooms for some of our students who really need the sensory rooms, you know, these maker spaces, innovation labs. And I'd kind of love to see some of that come into our sort of overall school planning as we're looking at school buildings. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is the conversation about inclusive spaces. And I bring this up actually out of a conversation with a student at Falls Church High School who was talking about the new renovation plan for Falls Church, and his concern, I guess they have a population of special education students that are kind of, their space is kind of right now is somewhat centrally located in the school, and this is the student relaying. So, the other students are often walking by and interacting with those students. But in the new design for Falls Church, that space for those special ed students is going to be in sort of one separate wing of the school. And this student shared with me how he was very sad to lose that sort of natural interaction with these students and how much he's learned from it. And so, I'm just wondering how much of building inclusive spaces where kids can kind of co-mingle in a more natural way is thought about in some of our ed specs and our design of new schools.
Thank you. I would say Thank you. I would say, you know, we have not, you know, we don't look on a school-by-school, design-by-design basis. But certainly, we're open to hear about those kind of requests, and certainly, you know, collaborative learning and interaction seems to be a wave of the future. So, you know, we noticed on our tour last year of Thomas, you know, the renovation of Thomas Jefferson High School, how there were several collaborative type spaces built into that facility so that, you know, anybody walking through the hall, or like you say, would pass by people working on various projects.
I bring up the area about special education in particular, because I find sometimes some of our schools, for ease of sort of staff, have a wing. And it ends up creating a separation in general. So I was thinking in terms of more of overall design as you're going forward, is that something that could be thought of as an intentional conversation?
Absolutely. We can certainly look at that.
I have Ms. McLaughlin next.
So, thank you also. Again, it's wonderful to see veterans on F-PAC. I think, yes, Charlie in particular, you precede me with your work on F-PAC from my predecessor, Tessie Wilson. So you're, you're well beyond eight years of a...
And Anne is a senior member at the moment.
Yeah. Yeah. So, so thank you. I have a couple of questions. One is, what, if any, work has F-PAC been looking into in terms of our very long SAC waitlists and space utilization? The fact that the MOU that's been signed by both boards, it dates back to 1987. Number two, pre-K space needs and current utilization. Our middle school start times concern, this is a directive from the board this past May, so we're going on almost a year, that the board has been long wanting to get this into place. Also, FCPS ON, as we continue our rollout efforts, what's the impact on our wireless capacity in the buildings? And then finally, our high school stadium bathrooms. There are 15 of our 25 high schools that do not have stadium bathrooms, and that does impact our, not just our students and families, but also our adult and youth rec leagues. So that is something that the board gave a follow-on directive to the superintendent. I wanted to make sure you knew about that. And I've been talking with boards of supervisors who are also interested in this. As FCPS and the county look to grow sports tourism in Fairfax County, having bathroom facilities in our stadiums, especially some of our largest stadiums, is going to be an important part of attracting and bringing in revenue. So, Madam Clerk, if you could stop the clock, because I'm going to have them see if they can answer all those things I just threw out at them.
Yes, the SAC, the SAC space, we certainly appreciate the conundrum that's been, that's developed over the last 35, 40 years with the SAC space, the share, it was set up that they got their two classrooms, and they were very sacrosanct, and they couldn't be used for anything except SAC, and that became ultimately untenable. And I think that most schools have worked out a relationship that those rooms are used more generally and not specifically for SAC, just in the two hours after school, as SAC has also begun to use the gymnasiums. But it's, it's something that needs to be looked at as far as the waitlist goes and the space, come back to flexibility of space on that.
Yeah. Let me just add in on the, on the SAC issue. You know, again, when we took our tour of Alice Lee West in Arlington County, you know, we were there in the afternoon when SAC was going on. And, you know, we were surprised at how much of the school they were actually using for SAC. Not only were they using classrooms and bringing, you know, SAC on a cart into a classroom, but they were fully using the gym and the cafeteria, and a lot more space than generally what our schools do.
Pre-K, pre-K is a big issue, and no, we have not looked at that. I mean, that's, that's, yes, it's on the list, but I wouldn't say that we've looked at how that can be accommodated, except that more space is better. Middle school start times, we just met with Francine Furby last month, and she talked to us about the transportation issues. And, you know, we have 1,600 buses in the fleet and 1,200 or 1,300 of them running daily. And, yeah, it's, it seems to be a matter of buses, because each bus needs to be used once for elementary, once for middle, and once for high. And if we overlap any of those too much, it requires more buses, more drivers.
Yeah. The, I think what we determine in connection with the middle school start time is, it's both, you know, not only a number of bus issue, but again, back to this bus driver shortage issue. That there's, even if they were to get the buses, they wouldn't have enough drivers to drive them.
The wireless capacity, that is totally new to me. I have no idea what FCPS ON is, so. We'll add it to, I mean, I know what it is by what you just said.
I'd be curious.
He still has children in the building. I don't.
I'd be curious, has there, I'll ask the staff here, has there been any reports of not enough bandwidth in the schools with all the computers working? I'm not sure. My, you know, my students haven't reported back on that, so I haven't heard anything on that.
And stadium restrooms, I think that comes down mostly to money. We did hear at our retreat that there is some effort and progress at working with the county on how there needs to be a reasonableness in those stadium restrooms, that technically, if you have a stadium that seats 5,000 people, you need a restroom with 47 commodes. We're not going to build a restroom with 47 commodes. So there needs to be, and once again, hopefully, working with the county, more and better, we'll continue to create the deals that we have structured, that yes, a dozen commodes or six is better than zero, which is what we have now, and perfectly reasonable for a Friday night football game. The sports tourism is a whole new aspect that certainly needs to be considered.
Again, we feel this is, is an area where the school board and the board of supervisors will need to work together and find a solution, perhaps even with the Economic Development Authority as well, if there is a tourism component to it. You know, so, yeah, we, we're all for it. Again, we are looking at the community use piece of the facilities in depth, and that is certainly one of the components we're looking at.
Looking at the, going back to the SAC just a moment, and someone else, the vocational programs and the special ed programs, and how these, these change over, over time. And, and, you know, there's an effort, you know, we had to beat the Russians in the 50s and 60s, and then we know, then we need to read some Shakespeare, because we completely lost literature, and then we need to beat the Russians again. So, so, you know, these things change, and yet we're only renovating our building every 37 years. So the space needs to really be flexible. And that's, that's what we're seeing at Thomas Jefferson and a little bit at West Springfield, that the walls are movable, and that big testing room can be four classrooms most of the time. But it can also be a, a big facility. The auditorium can be divided, the gym can be divided. And the flexibility of space, and the re-education of the people who use the space, that, no, I'm sorry, this is not just a SAC room, or a science lab, or an art studio. It has to be flexible, if not daily, weekly, at least over generations.
So, thank you for that. I wasn't trying to throw curveballs at all. I more so, I think, wanted to put out there that these are some of the things I'm really hearing from the families in my district, in particular, the SAC waitlists. And so I will just say that this is something where I think the county and the public school system could benefit from the structure of the Schools Committee for the Planning Commission, as well as F-PAC, to really help us look at the fact that, as I understand it, especially with SAC, we kept relying on this dedicated space that was completely unavailable to teachers and principals. And now the floating space concept's there, but when you have a 1987 MOU, that, that flexibility's not just there yet. And then thank you for mentioning Arlington County, because our former school board member, Pat Hines, was a teacher, is a teacher in Arlington Public Schools, and they have a drop-in SAC program. So I want to just plant the seed. I really think we need to use you guys and your wisdom to help us with SAC.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Tarna Kofax.
Thank you, and thank you for being here, and thank you for your dedication, your long-term dedication. We really do appreciate the time and energy you put into this. Thank you so much. I had a question on, you're talking about the changing demographics, and I just wanted you to expand on that a little bit, on how you talked about that in your meetings at this point, about what changes you think might be necessary to accommodate these, these new students to our community.
The demographics, you know, over the last few years have changed, and Jessica Staff does a great job in terms of tracking the various trends. There's several things about, you know, people coming into the county, and there was a time when a lot of people from Prince William had moved up because of changes in rules they made down there. Then we had unaccompanied minors. We've had a number of things over the last few years that, that cause inflows and outflows into the, into the county, and as well as migration within the county itself. So there's all sorts of things that are happening, which include some of the people placement things and things of that nature.
Yeah, I was just going to also add to that. I mean, we've got a lot of changing residential development that's happening around the county. It's definitely more compact and condensed now to accommodate the larger population over the years. So I think, although that's not like a demographics type of thing, that the family unit is changing and evolving, and are our schools built in the areas and renovated to meet, you know, the needs of larger residential multi-unit structures and getting kids to and from, you know, those types of homes and facilities to, to the schools and back, and just...
Okay, thank you. And I do know, I just had a, we just met with the high school principals, and we, as a system, are challenged to, three principals between January and now, got over 50 students each, levels one and two, Dr. Braybrand, and I think it's, and, you know, we're, we're not able to completely address their needs at this time. No, no additional staffing was added, not to mention facilities. That's, you know, where, where do you house two new classrooms if you're at the max, if you're at max, max capacity, and you get these students in at this time? So I think we do have to talk about having flexible class space and really track where this happens. And it's, it's definitely something that we need to address, because if these children are coming here for better lives and education, that they can't get where they are, we need to make sure we're meeting their needs, and we're meeting their needs effectively. So, thank you.
I have Ms. Keys-Gamarra.
Well, I, I don't have a lot of questions, because I got to spend a little bit of time with them this past Saturday at their retreat. So I do want to thank you guys for the labor of love to Fairfax County Public Schools. And from that discussion, I know I got an opportunity to hear what you were concerned about, but also some of the things that, you know, I thought you might want to tell us a little bit about. And so I want to give you that opportunity. One of those things had to do with safety and security, and how that fits into your charge. Would you like to, can you expound on how you might be able to help guide us in that area in understanding what is necessary, or what the board might want to consider? I'll start there.
Thanks, Karen. So I think there's a couple of things that we're trying to run down for our write-up for the annual report related to this topic. One, a couple of things, a couple of high-level items. One would be, we're trying to understand if there's a backlog of safety and security needs, whether that's across the entire county system, like the locks that were replaced a couple of years ago. That seemed to happen pretty comprehensively. You know, is there a need like that, again, that would hit and implicate or include multiple schools, or meant most of the schools? So, and in addition to that, do we have these large-scale needs? Or, and then are there other items that are a higher priority to address if funding becomes available? Whether that's vestibules, being added to additional schools outside of a renovation cycle, things like that. We're just trying to get a better handle on what, what the needs are at particular schools. And then also, what that backlog is, and is that backlog known, and is it documented, and is it being assessed for budgeting needs? I think another item would be priorities in terms of the, the safety and security. Now that the locks were done a couple of years ago, and there's been some other activity on enhancements with potential cameras and additional training for staff, which seems to be really kickstarting and moving along really well. So what are the next steps? What are the next big initiatives for safety and security that, that the board and that center office is looking into? And... Go ahead.
Somewhat like our bathroom initiative, where we were able to budget money, find money, borrow, scoop money around to, to address the bathroom deficiencies at certain high schools that were far out of renovation queue cycle, and yet needed specific, and the plumbing's not going to change. Renovating a bathroom is not going to upset a renovation plan 10 years from now, because those bathrooms are always going to be where those bathrooms are. So that was a project. Similarly, with security, with vestibules, or with certain other physical aspects of security, there might be a special program arranged to address the schools that are just mid-cycle and far away from having that new aspect incorporated into a renovation.
Yeah, the, you know, what we've learned through this process in, in meeting with Tom and his people is, of course, there's the physical aspect of it, and the schools, and what Katie's talking about. But, you know, he also reminds us about the, the associated mental health need, and the counselors, and all the people that need to, to be available in the schools to, to help assist with that aspect of the safety and security piece.
So I'll throw another issue out that I heard while I was there. And I, we'd had a lot of talk just now about flexibility, and I think I, as one board member, would welcome any feedback or guidance or recommendations with respect to how we can have flexible spaces. We've heard a lot from our community, or some from our community, about the need for spaces that are just available where kids can kind of have mental health space. And so I'd like to hear how you believe our libraries fit into that.
The school libraries, yeah. You know, the school libraries are probably one of the most evolving things. We, we had that discussion on Saturday while we were meeting in the West Springfield Library. It's how much longer will, will we need books in libraries? How many books do we need in libraries? And, and, you know, of course, it's a huge amount of square feet that, that, you know, a library sits in. It seems, you know, I think if, if there are needs for, you know, quiet spaces or whatever other kind of pullout and, and those type of spaces, that a library would certainly be a place where that could be accomplished. The space we were in, I mean, all the stacks are on wheels, it can be reconfigured, and it, it wouldn't, you know, I mean, they were fairly spread out. It wouldn't take much to, to find some space within the... It wouldn't take much to find some space within the library. Some schools, you know, I think have, you know, smaller footprints, smaller libraries. And I know the staff has done a great job about reclaiming library space in a lot of the elementary schools, and being able to use those for additional classroom space. So I think it's certainly something, the whole space planning thing is something that needs to be looked at. Of course, you know, the principals have a lot of control over the use of the school, and I know Jessica and her staff do a lot of work with the principals to be sure that they're using them quite efficiently, and, you know, certainly, you know, I think that's an ongoing process.
My last question has to do with what I call the third rail of school boards, and that's boundaries. And we all know that we have some schools with, where they have space, and others where they're over, and, but our culture doesn't allow, where we might want flexible classrooms, they don't want flexible boundaries. So, do you have any thoughts on how we can best communicate with our community as these changing needs are coming about, and various needs with respect to space?
Certainly, and, you know, I know that you all had a big discussion about that at your school board meeting, about being able to go out to the community and let them know that options A through G, or whatever, were looked at before you get to option H, which is a boundary change. And I think in, one of the themes from our retreat was communication in general and community engagement, and we feel certainly, you know, the more transparent, the more engagement there is with the community about how you got to this point, the better it will be overall.
Well, thank you, guys. I'm glad you were able to have the retreat, and it was great to be there.
I have Ms. Bukarski, then I'd like to go, and then I have Ms. McLaughlin for a go-back.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight, and I appreciate meeting with two of your members earlier in January. One of the questions I did have was, you wrote in here that you, in the coming months, you plan to explore the ability of maybe conducting a comprehensive facility assessment. Can you talk a little bit more about that? Is that something that's been, when was it last done? What would that look like? What you are, just some more details around that?
You bet. I'm not the best expert on the facilities, community assessment. I can tell you, what we're looking to do is essentially get a report of what the state is of all the current facilities within the school. So this would include HVAC, AC systems, roofs, whatever other types of components there may be, so that those two can be incorporated into a renovation cycle, and, you know, maintenance cycle, so that funds are available throughout the life cycle to replace those items as they come out. So if you have a new chiller in a school, and that's got a 10- or 15-year life cycle, we know that, and, you know, we can allocate the funds appropriately somewhere in the capital planning process.
One of the things we learned, that thing on the ceiling there, that big white square thing with the air coming out of it right above Laura, is a cassette, right, Jeff? And, and they've put them in, and they're wonderful for individual control of rooms, and this room may be around for 40 years, but that cassette is not going to last 40 years. And so how do we budget correctly to replace those before they fail? And at the moment, we're more reactionary than preventive, and we're big enough that that shouldn't be the case. We're spending some tenth of a percent of our budget on long-term maintenance, and we should be at four or five percent, five percent. And somewhere, we might not get all the way there, but that's where we want to incorporate into the CIP, a little more specific lines for this major maintenance, so that we don't have to have emergency situations and rent air conditioning systems on trucks.
Ms. McLaughlin, you can go ahead with your go-back, and I'll just wait for the last word. Okay. All right. My questions first, I just want to thank you so much for all the work that you do. I've been lucky enough to get to know some of your FPAC members for quite a while, and I'm very appreciative of all the expertise that you all, in your free time, have accumulated about our facilities. My, I have two questions for you. One, when we talk, a common theme that I'm hearing from our students are the lack of privacy in our restrooms and our locker rooms. And so a question that I have, I guess, is, you know, do you see a role where there's an evaluation, and we kind of look to the modernization of those facilities for kids who just would like extra privacy? We don't have stalls other than restroom stalls, which then I hear is frustrating for kids who actually need to use the restroom, and we have a lot of, as you said, maintenance with our bathroom stalls when locks fail, and how long does that take? So I guess I would like to throw that to you.
Yeah, that is something that's definitely on our radar. We've heard that multiple times this year, it seems, with regard to the state of the bathrooms and the privacy issues as well. And, you know, there was a program that was undertaken a few years ago, which did try to renovate and upgrade some of the bathrooms before. I'm not sure the funding's available to do a similar project right now, but it's certainly something we're going to advocate for in our report.
I think that's something we could definitely look into, because the days of gang showers are long past, but some of our schools almost, you know, you can still see that, well, that's where that was. And so that gets renovated out, and, but what is the next step? And that's what we don't know, and I think we have to look at some best practices at other school systems, and certainly other people, and maybe our DOD members have some experience and can share what's being done in other places, in other cultures, where it's been far more important far longer.
Thank you. My other question is about the renovation queue. We've had this conversation, and we were fortunate to be able to have two of your members reach out and meet with all of us new folks to get us up to speed, luckily, on the SIP prior to our starting, but our question kind of has remained about the queue for renovations. I think we've seen in the past some confusion about how things get placed on there, what 's the impetus, and, and so I guess, you know, we would love some more information from you all about sort of what you see in your long tenure about the best way to advise how that queue needs to happen.
Absolutely. The, you know, the history of the queue, which you probably are mostly familiar with, was, and I forget the year when they did the last queue, but what happened was, a consultant was hired to go out to all the various schools, do an assessment on each school, using factors that were determined... Percent assigned for, you know, each factor. It was all thrown into the mix, and then you ended up generating the renovation queue. At the time, I think they were still thinking it was a 25-year renovation queue. Of course, that's slipped since then. The, you know, the concept of the queue was to create a non-political order for the renovations, so that it was based strictly on the school's need, and the age of the facility, and whatever other factors they used. It's, you know, as where we are in the queue right now, it's certainly time to do another one. You're all well aware of that. And, you know, I think, you know, I think we feel that probably doing it in a similar fashion would make sense. The criteria is where the key thing would be when you're redoing a queue. I mean, we heard stories about, you know, whatever grading scale there was, you know, if the school didn't have an elevator, it got rated poorly, or some, there was something that skewed it a little bit, but we certainly feel that it's getting close to time, you know, within the next two years to get that renovation queue redone, and hopefully, with continued support from the school board, advocating with the board of supervisors, to get the annual bond allotment up every year to allow for renovations to happen on a more frequent basis.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin?
Thank you. I wanted to go back for a couple of reasons, as I gave you sort of my own personal wish list, again, of how can we, as a county, really tackle the SAC waitlists, knowing that Arlington has a model that it sounds like really accommodates our working families and doesn't have those types of waitlists. Some of the waitlists in the Braddock District are 60 to 90 students deep, and that's really hard pressure. Another thing that affects it is when the elementary school starts. So we have some elementary schools that start as late as 9:20. Again, very hard for working parents, and that's where I think you see a lot of the SAC waitlists before school are particularly problematic. This board and the school division and the board supervisors, going back at least probably seven years, maybe longer, but Ms. Kofax and I know that when the Successful Children/Youth Policy Team was created, going on now seven years ago, it was, you know, pre-K and early childhood education was one of the two pillars of why Skipt was created. And so I guess I would just say that, as you guys continue your work with FPAC, and you're preparing your annual report, and, you know, I was looking at the charge, and I apologize, after all these years, I should know better on how your charge gets put together, but I'm a little worried that the charge, while always meaningful, what you guys bring to us, is so high-level that it's almost not helping us deal, I think, with some of the real world, like where we need some intentional help right away. And so I guess for my colleagues as well, I just want to reiterate that I do think early childhood education space in our buildings, along with SAC, and along with middle school start times, to me, are three very important things. I know safety and security has gotten a lot more attention, but these are three pressing areas, and I would, I think that FPAC is well-positioned to have the volunteer experts to go, and as you mentioned, Dan, visiting Arlington, bringing that information back to Jeff Plattenberg's team and this board, to say, "Look, there's some models out here working." And then I do want to say, Charlie, to the point you made about bathroom renovations, Robinson, when it was renovated in 1998, they ran out of money. I'm not even sure what happened there with that planning, but, so, some of their bathroom facilities, and definitely their locker rooms and their gymnasium are original. So those are, just please put it on your list of what, maybe visit there and see what it's looking like.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate your time. I can say that the FPAC folks are super awesome about answering emails if there's particular questions. I'm lucky enough to get to be their liaison, so I'm very happy to bring any questions that you all have as well, if you'd like me to, to their future meetings, and we look forward to getting to see you in the summer again, and thank you again for all the time that you put in.
I'd like to add one more thing. A big shout-out to the staff, particularly Jessica Gillis and Kathy Vasipoly, who support us admirably.
Thank you.
For everybody else, we're on track, believe it or not, I want to knock wood, but a 10-minute break, put it in your minds, eight-minute break, so you're actually back here in 10 minutes, and everybody maybe can grab supper, and then we'll go on to our next item.